In Osami City, you're watching One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. Serving you with information, news, sports, and public affairs. One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. Serving you with love. Ang telebisyon pang masa. One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. One TV Special Report.
Honorable Saint Piusianeri.
Present.
Honorable Lord Lee Twenty Seppers. Honorable Catherine Lee. Honorable Cecil Coe. Honorable Marcelo Romero II. Honorable Roland Suizo Junior.
Present.
Honorable Daniel Lau. Honorable Juanito Sakin Junior. Honorable Marsilian Tapayan. Honorable Saulo I Salvador. Honorable Sanso Waminal Junior. Honorable Giancarlo Morales. Honorable Gianfeil Duhaileungson. And Honorable Relita Batillon. We have thirteen members of the President's Honor, including the Honorable Presiding Officer.
Having thirteen members present, the Chair declares a purum. Once again, good afternoon. For the order of business, may I call on the Honorable Majority Floor Leader, Honorable Marsilian Tapayan, please?
Yes, Honorable Chair, good afternoon. Good afternoon, everybody. We have no guests. A video of the course hour in this afternoon's presentation. We proceed to item number five. Approval of the agenda for the day. There are at least thirteen proposed written concessions, Honorable Chair. May I introduce? Number one. Resolution ratifying the memorandum of agreements between the local government unit of Osami City, represented by the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Wain Junior, and Mass Medical Center for the Pharmacy X-ray Medical Equipment Technician, MOS. Number two. Resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement understanding between the Department of Social Welfare and Development Region 10 for the implementation of the supplementary feeding program. Number three, Honorable Chair, is a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Wain Junior, to enter into and sign on behalf of Osami City, the memorandum of agreement, the social security system, for SS self-employed program. Number four, Honorable Chair, is a resolution approving the quarterly meeting of this WWD Osami State Office in Osami City. Number five. A resolution approving the pilces, mobile precision, pilces, on wheels, institutional pilces precision, and epilit issuance and authentication by PSA Provincial Office in Osami City. Number six. Proposed written concession, Honorable Chair, is a resolution approving the mass blood donation on twenty-sixth and thirty-one of March, twenty twenty-four by the Philippine Red Cross Osami Chapter in Osami City. Number seven. A resolution approving the fourth Facility Security Advisory Committee meeting on twenty-seventh March, twenty twenty-four by the Port Management Office of Osami Central, Osami City. Number eight. Written proposed concession is a resolution approving the Training in Shaded Metal Act Welding NC-2 from twenty-seventh March to two May twenty twenty-four by Kokpas for Technic Institute Incorporated in Osami City. Number nine, Honorable Chair, is a resolution approving the Training in Shaded Metal Act Welding NC-2 from one April to seventeen May twenty twenty-four by Osami University, Osami City. Number ten. A resolution approving the April twenty twenty-four Liberal Force Touring on eighth to thirty April, twenty twenty-four by PSA Provincial Office in Osami City. Number eleven, Honorable Chair, is a resolution approving the intermittent counterfeit detection and sorting workshop on twenty-two June twenty twenty-four with Bank Central and Prepinas, Osami City. But twelve. An ordinance creating the essential Osami's week-end market and at capish on a length along the Osami Central Fitness Park, assigning the management director to the city economic enterprise office and providing for a expanding road patrol schedule and additals for operation. Number thirteen, the last but not least. A resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement for the training of floating trailers, pharmaceuticals, and the rise competitiveness enhancement fund mechanism program to develop a center for service development and mechanism in implementing initiative development of agriculture. These are the thirteen written proposed concessions, Honorable Chair. Accordingly, I move in motion to approve the agenda for today with thirteen written proposed concessions which I imitated awhile, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Majority Floor Leader, manifested by the Honorable Majority Floor Leader for the approval of our agenda for today with thirteen concessions, motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, there are the minutes attached to our order of business. At the item number six. We proceed to item number seven, letter C. Requested or request for first reading. Barangay twenty twenty-four annual budgets during indoors by City Budget Officer for approval will complete budgetary revenues as follows. Number one, Aguada eleven million two hundred thirty-four thousand and three hundred sixty-four pesos. Number two, Baybay Sanroki five million seven hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred eighty-seven pesos. Pacolot, number three, four million twenty seventy thousand and two hundred thirty-three pesos. Number four, Balintuak, two million nine hundred sixty thousand six hundred fifty-four pesos. Number five, Iman, two million nine hundred forty-one thousand two hundred twenty-eight. Number six, Itapan, two million eight hundred forty thousand nine hundred sixty-six. Now, Honorable Chair, I yield the Chairman of the Committee on Barangay Affairs, Honorable Giancarlo Morales, to introduce only the list and recommend action on these six items, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Giancarlo is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion on items number, letter C.
Uh, thank you, Majority Floor, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I would like to pass the barangay twenty twenty-four annual budgets of the six barangays. Uh, barangay Aguada in the amount of eleven million two hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred sixty-four pesos. Barangay Baybay Sanroki in the amount of five million seven hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred eighty-seven pesos. Uh, barangay Pacolot in the amount of four million two hundred seventy thousand two hundred thirty-three. Barangay Balintuak in the amount of two million nine hundred sixty thousand six hundred fifty-four. Barangay Iman in the amount of two million nine hundred forty-one thousand two hundred eighty-eight. Barangay Litapan in the amount of two million eight hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-six. Uh, I would like to pass for first reading with reservation, Madam Chair.
Move for first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Uh, Madam Chair, considering uh, the necessity and urgency of the said annual budgets and it is being reviewed by the City Budget Office, Madam Chair, I would like to pass for second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Manifested by the Honorable Morales to pass this on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Number seven, twenty twenty-four supplemental budget number one of barangay Banjadero in the amount of five hundred thousand pesos during indoors by City Budget Officer for approval. I again yield to the Chairman of the Committee on Barangay Affairs, Honorable Giancarlo Morales, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
For item number seven, the Honorable Giancarlo Morales is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Majority Floor, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I would like to pass the twenty twenty-four supplemental budget number one of barangay Banjadero in the amount of five hundred thousand for first reading with reservation.
Approved on the first reading with reservation.
Madam Chair, due to the urgency of the said supplemental budget, uh, Madam Chair, I would like to pass for second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request, the Honorable Morales is passing this uh, twenty twenty-four supplemental budget number zero one barangay Banjadero in the amount of five hundred thousand. Move for its approval of the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Letter D, messages and communications. Number one, resolution number one at seven in the twenty-four of the Social Welfare League of Osami Central approving ordinance number twelve nine zero. Thus, twenty twenty-three, all this number one of Osami's ordinance establishing guidance for guarantee premium pay for the contract service and job for the workers, local government in Osami City. Honorable Chair, this is an approval with the September legal restrictions that on our ordinance establishing the guidelines for the guarantee premium pay to conduct service and job for the workers of local government in Osami City. In the meantime, Honorable Chair, I recommend that this resolution or certificate can be just united record see consideration.
On item number one, on messages and communications, manifested by the Honorable Majority Floor Leader that this be just duly noted.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Number eight, committee report submitted. Committee of the whole dated March four twenty twenty-four on date. Proposed ordinance providing for the speed limits for all kinds of motor vehicle within the territorial jurisdiction of Osami City, providing penalties for violation of collection of road cross data and appropriating funds for this purpose. Honorable Chair, this committee report contains four pages and its recommendation is that the committee of the whole will conduct further study based on inputs, proposals, and ideas presented during the hearing. This committee report signed by all members of this committee, including the studying officer, Honorable Chair. Accordingly, I move in motion to concord adopt this committee report with the committee of the whole dated March four twenty twenty-four on the revocation of ordinance providing for speed limits for all kinds of motor vehicle within the territorial jurisdiction of Osami City and providing penalties for violation of collection of road cross data and appropriating funds for this purpose. On joint motion, Honorable Chair.
On joint motion, the Honorable Majority Floor Leader move to concord and adopt this committee of the whole um, dated March four twenty twenty-four on the proposed ordinance providing for the speed limit of all kinds of motor vehicle within the territorial jurisdiction of Osami City, providing penalties for violation of the collection of road cross data and appropriating funds for this purpose. Move by the Honorable Majority Floor Leader to concord and adopt this committee of the whole report. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved to concord and adopt this committee report.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Number nine, colored of business, letter A, on fitness business. None, it will be business for ladies on second reading by cabinet ordinance. Number two, shares of twenty twenty-three and ordinance imposing impose controlling, controlling a street of adults at home. This ordinance was approved on the proceeding on March nineteenth twenty twenty-four to certain and verify whether this ordinance passed the approved public hearing in the barangay, Honorable Chair. However, we verified that it was the barangay assembly uh, being undertaken in the barangay where in this barangay ordinance, controlling a street of adults at home are discussed subsequently and adequately thereby providing with the mandate of having a public hearing in the barangay. Therefore, I now yield to Chairman of the Committee on Barangay Affairs, Giancarlo Morales, to recommend this ordinance for approval on the second reading, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Giancarlo Morales is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion on item number nine, letter B. Um. For second reading, item number one of letter B.
Okay, I thank you, Majority Floor, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass an ordinance of barangay cabinte. Uh, ordinance number two is twenty twenty-three. An ordinance imposed controlling a street dogs and dogs and dogs at home approved on first reading on March nineteenth for regular session. Uh, I would like to pass for first reading with reservation.
This would only pass when the first reading. This is on second and final reading.
Uh, second, uh, second and final re- uh, reading weaving the internal rules. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Second and second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Okay, motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, letter C. And as I understand, whereby we have about thirteen written proposed concessions, Honorable Chair, which we approved awhile ago. And I start with the first item. First, a proposal, a resolution ratifying the memorandum of agreements between the local unit of Osami City, represented by the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Wain Junior, and Mass Medical Center for the Pharmacy X-ray Medical Equipment Technician, MOS. Honorable Chair, I now yield to the Chairman of the Committee on Public Health and Health Association, Honorable Catherine C. Lim, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Catherine Lim is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a resolution ratifying the memorandum of agreements between the local government unit of Osami City, represented by the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Waminal Junior, and Mass Medical Center for the Pharmacy X-ray and Medical Equipment Technician, MOS, for first reading with reservation.
Move for first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to its urgency, I would like to pass this on second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the Honorable Catherine Lim is passing this on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approval decision number two. A resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Department of Social Welfare and the Department Region Ten, the SWD, for the implementation of this supplementary feeding program. I now yield to Chairman of the Committee on Social Services and Committee of the President, Honorable Sanso Waminal Junior, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
Committee Chair on Social Services, the Honorable Sanso Waminal is now recognized for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm this sample of this show, would like to move a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Department of Social Welfare and Development Region Ten, this WWD, for the implementation of the supplementary feeding program. Be approved for first reading, Madam Chair, on joint motion with reservation.
Motion approved on the first reading with reservation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Considering the urgency and in the spirit of public service, may I, dear, for move that this be approved on second and final reading weaving the internal rules of this second.
Move with Honorable Sanso Waminal to pass this resolution on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approval decision number three. A resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Wain Junior, to enter into and sign on behalf of Osami City, the memorandum of agreement with social precision for SS self-employed program. I now yield to Chairman of the Committee on Social Services, Honorable Doliver De Cipres, to endorse an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Lord Lee, uh, De Cipres is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you to our Majority Floor Leader and to our Presiding Officer. Um, I move to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Attorney Henry F. Waminal Junior, to enter and sign on behalf of the Osami City, uh, Osami City memorandum of agreement with the social security system for SS self-employed program. For first reading, Madam Chair, with reservation.
For first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Uh, due to the necessity of this madam, of this resolution, Madam Chair, I would like to pass this resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Attorney Henry F. Waminal Junior, to enter and sign on behalf of the Osami City memorandum of agreement with the social security system for SS self-employed program. For second and final reading, Madam Chair, on joint motion.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the Honorable De Cipres is passing this resolution on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approval decision number four. A resolution approving the quarterly meeting of this WWD Osami Field Office in Osami City. And I yield to Chairman of the Committee on Social Services, Honorable Sanso Waminal Junior, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Waminal is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Majority Floor Leader. Um, we would like to move a resolution approving the quarterly meeting of this WWD Osami's field office in Osami City. Be passed on first reading on joint motion, Madam Chair, with reservation.
Move for first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, for the sake of public welfare and given its utmost urgency, I so move for reapproval of this in on second and final reading on joint motion weaving the terms of this second.
Due to the urgency of this request, Honorable Waminal is passing this resolution approving the quarterly meeting of the SWD Osami's Field Office in Osami City for second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approval decision number five. A resolution approving the pilces mobile precision, pilces on wheels, institutional pilces precision, and epilit issuance and authentication by PSA Provincial Office in Osami City. I now yield to Chairman of the Committee on Barangay Affairs, Honorable Giancarlo Morales, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
Chairman of Barangay Affairs, Honorable Morales is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Uh, thank you, Majority Floor, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a resolution approving the pilces mobile registration, pilces on wheels, institutional pilces registration, and epilit issuance and authentication by PSA Provincial Office in Osami City. Uh, passing, uh, I would like to pass for first reading with reservation, Madam Chair.
Pass a move for first reading with reservation, motion approved.
Uh, Madam Chair, due to the necessity and urgency of the said resolution, I would like to pass for second and final reading weaving the internal rules, Madam Chair.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the Honorable Morales is passing this on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approval decision number six. A resolution approving the mass blood donation on twenty-sixth and thirty-one of March twenty twenty-four by the Philippine Red Cross Osami Chapter in Osami City. I now yield to Chairman of the Committee on Public Health and Health Association, Honorable Catherine C. Lim, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Catherine Lim is now recognized by the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would like to pass a resolution approving the mass blood donation on twenty-sixth and thirty-one of March twenty twenty-four by the Philippine Red Cross Osami's Chapter in Osami City for first reading with reservation.
For first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, due to its urgency and public demand. I would like to pass this on second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this, the Honorable, uh, Catherine Lim is passing this resolution approving the mass blood donation on, uh, twenty-sixth and thirty-one of March twenty twenty-four by the Philippine Red Cross Osami's Chapter in Osami City. Move for its approval on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comments, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approval decision number seven. A resolution approving the fourth Facility Security Advisory Committee meeting on twenty-seventh March twenty twenty-four by the Port Management Office of Osami Central, Osami, in Osami City. I now yield to Chairman of the Committee on Public Transportation and Public Utilities, Honorable Archie Romero, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Romero is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Uh, Madam Chair, I move to pass this resolution approving the fourth Facility Security Advisory Committee meeting on twenty-seven March twenty twenty-four by the Port Management Office of Osami Success- Osami Central, Osami, in Osami City. Passing this for first reading with reservation.
Move for first reading with reservation, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, due to its urgency and public Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to its urgency and public service, Madam Chair, I move to pass this resolution approving the Port Facility Security Advisory Committee meeting on 27th March 2024 with the Port Management Office of Osamis Occidental, Osamis in Osami City. For second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Manifested by the Honorable Romero to pass this resolution on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approval decisions number eight and number nine are resolutions approving the training in shielded metal art welding NC2 by KUPAS Poltechnic Institute Incorporated in Osami City. And the other one, same training in shielded metal art welding NC2 by Osamis University in Osami City. I now yield to Chairman of the committee Education, Honorable Señor Yugo, to honestly recommend action and endorse and recommend on this two items, Honorable Chair.
Your request, the Honorable Co, please pass this on.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Majority Leader. I would like to pass an omnibus motion to approving resolutions requested by two test the accredited schools. First by the KUPAS Polytechnic Institute Incorporated and second by the Osamis University, both offering the same course, which is the training in shielded metal art welding NC2 level on March 27th to May 2 and April 1st to May 17, uh, respectively. On first reading with, uh, with reservations, Madam Chair.
Move by the Honorable Co to pass these two resolutions on first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the public interest and demand, I move to pass these two approving resolutions on second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the Honorable Cecil Co is passing these two resolutions on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules.